And you'll leave us in invocation.
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, God, we love you and we just thank you for today. We thank you for all the things that you provide. God, we ask that you just continue to protect our community, Lord. I pray that you just continue to keep us healthy. Uh, Lord, keep us safe. I pray that you would just, uh, give a special blessing to those, uh, who are still working and especially those who are enduring hardships during this time. Um, God, we ask tonight for wisdom for our leaders. Uh, we ask that all things be done to glorify and honor you. We love you and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Samantha, will we have some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, legal, and reasonable
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Uh, as we get started, I would ask that everyone please try to remember to speak up. We have one microphone in the center. We're all spread out. Uh, when we do our reports, we're not going to be coming to a podium or anything. You can just give your report from your, uh, from your seat. Yeah. Attorney Kicklag asked for a brief report. He's got another meeting that he's participating in.
I presume the less referee put in the room, the better off we are.
There, there we go. So, um, we'll start with the roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Kara Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Joe Towor.
Here.
Dana McKnight.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. So the first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Can we get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda as well.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from March 10th, 2020. Do we need to make any changes there?
Uh, one that I noticed, um, third page, sec- uh, first, the six paragraph, second to last sentence, second to last word, the official name of the Carter Park Golf Course.
So we got a typo.
Just a typo.
In, uh, item six. It's the name of the Carter Park Golf Course. Can we get a C or a S put in there?
Oh.
Oh.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Misty? Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Got a motion as second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. And we'll get that changed for us. Next item is our public forum. Do we have anybody that wants to address the council tonight? Paula, you came all the way down here risking your life and you don't have anything to tell us?
Hey, I want to subscribe here.
Okay. All right, we'll close the public forum, move into our business reports. Uh, we'll start with the planning commission. Walter, you can just stay in your chair if you want. Just speak up.
Yeah, um, not a whole lot, you know, we've been on highs. We're waiting, as of right now, I know our, our main meeting is still canceled right now. Okay, yeah, so we're just ready to start going over the proposed zoning ordinance from regional planning. And other than that, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be a part of the Zoom meeting for the county planning commission, but I was able to watch the live stream. Lovely Elizabeth, our secretary, was there to represent. And it sounds exciting, uh, for the brewer or for the distillery going in possibly. And hopefully the railroad in the state does us right. And, and that's about all I have, I think. Any questions?
Any questions for the council?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Concerning that, do we have any intentions of annexing that particular area and possibly, uh, the, the Homestead addition into West Fork? Have we considered that? Are we?
Uh, so, good question, Dawn. Um, the brewery has expressed, uh, interest in us annexing them, um, or the distillery, that property, those property owners. Uh, as of current, they, they've not made anything formal. Uh, and obviously that's going to cause some problems with them selling alcohol and, and the city having, you know, no alcohol permit. So, uh, there has been discussion about it, yes. Uh, how will that flesh out? I don't know. Uh, Homestead, they have expressed interest in tying into the sewer and that is, um, the last time we talked, uh, there was, there was a document being floated around where they were signing it. They were signing saying they were interested in tying into step number one. As far as them annexing into the city, I, I've asked about that. I don't know if I've asked Attorney Kicklag about that or not. Uh, I have talked to regional planning about it, Jeff. And since they would be an island, we don't have any, uh, West Fork property attaching to them. They're, they kinda, they're hesitant about that.
The two properties in between wouldn't annex?
Well, that, that's kind of what, where we would need to go is try to get annexation of, of properties touching them. Ultimately, uh, when I brought it up to the, uh, what is she? She's the president of their homeowners association. I said, you know, we can give you sewer at a, at a lower rate if you guys are interested in annexing because we charge everyone outside the city limits an extra fee, uh, for city services if they're outside the city limits. So it is being discussed. As of now, I don't have anything, uh, to report to you, but...
I have a question. On the brewery, are they selling it wholesale? Is that what they're doing? They're not selling it just outright in?
So my understanding is that they are distilling for the wholesale industry, uh, to distributors, but that they will have...
Like a tasting or something like that?
Yeah, uh, I think you will be able to go in and maybe buy a bottle or, or do taste tests inside the, the facility.
So in order to annex them, then we'd have to go back and look at the alcohol law?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I wasn't able to watch a meeting the other night online. Uh, where are they at in their permitting process with the state?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know as far as their distillery permit.
It sounded like the first step was a conditional use, like that's where they were hoping to jump off from, was to get counties' conditional use permit and then...
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that was step one. Now they have, that's opened up and they have everything else in front of them now.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Next is our library report. Shannon?
We are currently encouraging patrons to return their items and we're quarantining the items for 72 hours before checking in and cleaning. Uh, we're also offering contact free printing and faxing. So that's as of, uh, today as far as turning in things and printing and faxing. So you can call the library for any information regarding these things. We've announced that we will do the curbside starting in, on March 25th in about two weeks. Our online library system, it works countywide. So we're kind of having to work as a team with Washington County to be able to use our online catalog. As far as West Fork goes, we do get to make independent decisions. So we're going to do curbside March 25th, but you'll just have to call in. We've also, um, we have an answering machine now. So if we miss a call, you can leave a message and we'll make sure to call you back. Um, the library is looking really great. I'm going to say we're over halfway done with putting everything up and that's an important thing to do first before we offer the curbside and everything else. So we're trying to get all of our collections ready so that patrons, uh, can take from any collection.
Any questions for Shannon? Has everyone been watching her Wednesday videos? John, you've been watching those?
I have.
These lines.
I've seen them. Watched the whole thing, maybe not, but I have seen them.
And as far as summertime goes, we are talking about, uh, doing that virtually as well. So our state has purchased the program and our county director is kind of heading over that. So, um, we may be offering still be, being able to do points and reading for minutes and stuff like that. So we're still figuring that out.
Very cool. So, um, I have been very happy with, with what Shannon's done. Um, with the library being closed, she's still, uh, a very big presence in the, in the community with, with the Wednesdays in particular, but, uh, I went down to the library the other day. Um, as I said, it's a mess down there, but it's exciting to see what she, what she's doing. And I went into the library when it was finished before Shannon and then it started moving everything in. It looked smaller before they started moving in. So, uh, I was, I was excited about that. It looks really good. All right. No questions for Shannon? Okay. Tracy? Give us the court report.
Hi. Um, I, our disbursements this month were way down, okay? Like 21,000 and I got out of my routine, so you don't have to track this month. I'll make those, we'll let it be next month. Looks like our tickets were down a little bit, but not like they're going to be down next month. Okay? Cause we, we already had a whole bunch of stuff set and now we're, we didn't have anything coming in. So we're just, I mean, we're going to be way, way down. Which our trials are still going on just like they're supposed to be. Um, trying to do as much as we can by phone still. We're trying to do as much as we can via email. Prosecutors have not been coming in. The judge has not been coming in, but everything comes back next week.
Any questions for Tracy? So while we're on that, I will just, as Tracy mentioned, um, our two departments that are going to, that it looks like currently will be hit the hardest by, uh, the virus pandemic, it will be the courts and police. Uh, they have, uh, contracted more than the other departments. Uh, police department's getting fines and, and different revenue from that. Obviously the court hasn't been collecting. Uh, the police department, um, I'll go ahead and say we're, we're back to normal, but the police department, uh, reduced the amount of traffic stops they were making. We have a small department. If one of them were to get COVID, it would almost shut down the entire department, uh, for quarantining purposes. So they've been really lax on, on, uh, they, they've only pulled people over if, if it was absolutely necessary. So, uh, one leads to the other. If the court's not making tickets, the, the, or if the police department's not writing tickets, the court's not collecting fines. So we very possibly will see some budget adjustments in the future, uh, for those two departments. So just keep that in mind.
I would add that, um, I've noticed that two or three people a day are like calling in and paying off everything they owe. And I, I don't know if they're better off because they have stimulus money or what the deal is, but I mean, they're, they're calling in and paying five or $600 and, or someone being $15,000 to pay everything off. And that seems like it's been up a little bit even though there's not any regular...
Right.
So hopefully that all comes out.
Yes. Absolutely. All right, police department, Chief Nelson?
You know, the point I want to make with that, we are now, we're down to about half of what we were doing here a couple of months ago. This is the first day we're going to get back after and start writing the tickets. As far as the rest of the stuff, that's going to still be based on when the county get open their, up their door and what they want to do. And a lot of these tickets too, I'm sure, we get tickets from the state police, from Washington County. And when I last talked to the state police, they were just pretty much shut down to half tickets.
More from the state parks than anything else.
Yes, state parks, uh, they picked that up. Uh, our call will go to the, yeah. Which I thought we started getting a lot more domestics and things like that, but we haven't. During this, people have been pretty quiet. I think what last month was 160 calls for service, down from 400 and something. The number that's up is all warrants and it's 98, but that's because we finally finished that project of getting rid of the old warrants. That's done, so all those numbers should now be the ones that are actually served, not the ones that were served again. Uh, we get somewhere around the range of $700 donated to us to help feed some of the families in West Fork. And we've got to make one more purchase, but we've just went to Sam's and what we've done is bought a whole bunch of kid type foods, easy to use, easy microwave, and they've been distributing through the, uh, elementary school. So I'm very thankful for the people that gave for that. And we did, we got ACAS out today, virtually. And it was two hours of model fun, but they said we're doing a great job and, uh, I'll bring, there's going to be about five changes to our policy that they want, that they've made mandatory now. So I'll be bringing that to you guys next month. And hopefully our numbers start going up, releasing, get back to working.
Don't be bringing a bunch into the county.
No, I know, we won't, we won't.
Any questions for Chief Nelson? So I will say, I don't know if any of you guys have heard, uh, I've had some feedback from it, but during this, uh, Chief Nelson, his department, uh, started implementing welfare checks for some of the elderly in town. Uh, that's been a big hit with, uh, some folks in town. Maybe not with all, but most, uh, have been excited to see the police stop by, uh, just see if they needed anything, check in on them, that type of thing. So, uh, I appreciate you and you guys, uh, doing that, looking in on people, uh, while we had an opportunity to do so. Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's also, uh, Police Week. I don't know if everybody knows that a lot, but it is, uh, Police Officer Appreciation Week. So thank you very much, John, for all that you all do.
Yeah. All right, Isaac?
Well, we too have been slowed down a little bit by the, the virus. We kind of suspended most of our sewer related projects. We focused more on treat repairs and, and ditch cleanouts that we pushed back on the back burner. Uh, the, the big news is, is they did get the sidewalk complete on Robinson. We did the walk through Friday, it was awesome. I don't know if anybody's had the time to drive by it. But it, they did do a really good job. And we'll have the final, final paint app and then you'll find they closed that project out. Uh, we have started on Dunk Street down, or Main Street right off of Dunk, putting some tiles in, getting ready to pour some driveway aprons and, and sidewalk down through there. So we've got that, that project started as well. Uh, and we did finally get the last event done there. A guy called and said he didn't want to hold up the project, so...
Good.
Uh, but we are, well, this week the rain is not going to allow us to do much, but, but we are going to start easing back into some more camera work with the sewer and start trying to identify where I am at. Cause, uh, Nick gave me a scary number today that if we stay on pace of what we're at, what we're at, we're going to do 165 million gallons of water through the sewer plant this year, so...
Which is over about 70, 70 million gallons from...
From their original west end. We are six inches of rainfall over what we normally are for the year already, so... Need a drought. I'm selling the shit off.
Will we pray for rain?
Another big thing that happened yesterday was the trash truck ran across the bridge at Dolly and Campbell and that is now closed for a while until we can iron that out and schedule repairs for that. They, he's the first trash truck to try it and didn't make it very far, so...
Was that in the wrong end of the vehicle?
Yeah.
What was the, um, dispatch managers or the call out managers' response to that? Part liability on their part?
He, he had called me and, and said there was an incident and I went down there and after talking to the, the lady that lives there, she said, "I'm here every day and that's the first trash truck I've seen go across it." She said, "They make us take our trash can to the other side of the bridge so they can pick it up from Campbell." So there, and that was one of the streets that we had talked about in the beginning that they shouldn't be on. They shouldn't be on Dolly. I, I don't even know how he got turned off, McKnight, on to Dolly, really, but, but he did. Decided he was courageous enough to cross that bridge.
They're claiming it on their insurance.
Yeah, uh, I'm trying to get the information for jobs to the police report so we can get that. And I'm in contact with the supervisor up there to, to maybe find out on their insurance and make some repairs. And, and they're supposed to be coming down. Help me get it, help me put it into a dollar figure instead of a broken bridge, so...
Good comments. Yeah. Any other questions for Isaac? Have we met, uh, since we talked about we were participating in the COVID testing at the sewer plant?
Just now.
I did, okay. So it looks like, uh, I had a meeting with mayors two weeks ago, week ago. Uh, it looks like we're the only, uh, city with a sewer plant that participated in that. We did four weeks, four negative weeks of testing, um, so they, they can trace the, the COVID virus through, uh, sewage. Uh, several towns, uh, participated in it, but we were the only ones in this area. And so, anyway, uh, want to give Isaac, uh, attaboy for, for getting us signed up for that. Uh, we did four weeks. We could continue. Um, the pricing for that has, uh, went up quite dramatically since, uh, we initially started it. So I think we're going to stop at this point, but, uh, I think it's a good, a good point to, to stop. Uh, it looks like we're going to, you know, things are contracting a little bit. So, anyway, um, Isaac, I'm glad, I was glad to be able to, to set across from some mayors in very big cities and, uh, ask them if, if they were participating and why they didn't know what the, the COVID count was in their city. Uh, and, and us from a small town be able to say, I know exactly how many, you know, what, what's being tracked throughout. So, anyway, I appreciate that. Parks?
Um, I'll start with a quick update on the memorial project. Um, y'all might remember there was a voice, local boy scout that was taken on that project as an Eagle Scout project. And the deadline for that to be done originally was today. Of course, like everything else, it's been put on hold, but he did get approval to do that as an Eagle Scout project and they have extended his deadline into August. So hopefully that will get back on track and we'll get our pavilion, uh, for the memorial put in sometime. Met with him a couple of times and he's, he's got a good line on some donations, so plus with materials that are already purchased, so hopefully we can get that thing done, done fairly, fairly reasonable, if not at no additional cost, uh, than what we're doing. Um, as far as parks are concerned, as everyone is aware, we, we closed down a lot of the parks, uh, amenities and we've, uh, the parking at Riverside, we, we put to as minimal as possible, uh, for the safety and to curb the crowds down there. And, and so it's worked pretty well for the most part and it's helped, uh, curb crowds, keep it a safer level. The mayor, uh, we've discussed the, the target date of June 1st of opening. Some of those amenities backed up. We're, uh, tracking what other cities in the area are doing with their parks and stuff, so that could change. But right now it looks like June 1st, uh, is, is our target date. As far as our other projects, the sidewalk and the grant applications for those and things like that, that's all been, been put on hold until, till things start getting back to normal and opening back up. So we've been doing a lot of, uh, small projects at the park, at the parks and, and maintenance and bowling and weeding, those things. Uh, a lot of cleaning up and stuff on our disc golf course, uh, getting that thing in better shape as well. Uh, we were able to, uh, renew the butterfly garden down Riverside, uh, replace some of the plants that, in there that, that haven't done well. They look good for very short periods, so we put some stuff in. We've put some stuff in there that will look better year round, be more resilient, more durable. And, uh, it looks much, much better already. Um, we, the committee hasn't met in a couple of months and we don't plan on meeting in May. Uh, we have communicated through emails and things to, on things necessary for the parks. We hope to be able to meet in June, discuss our 4th of July event. Don't really know what that's going to be like, but we are still hoping to have a 4th of July event. I have been assured by our fireworks distributor that we will have fireworks and they will be ready if we are able to have an event. It's going to be as much smaller event in any way we have it. It's probably going to just be a fireworks show, but we're still kind of seeing what we're able to do. But we hope to still put on a show, a fireworks show at the minimum. We stopped asking for donations, so there's not the funding will have to be a lot less. It just didn't seem right to be how to ask them, especially when we don't even know what we're going to be able to do or if we're going to be able to have one, but it didn't seem like the right time. So donations put on hold, scheduling events and different vendors and things, so... So that's kind of where we're at until we, until we get a little more clarification on what we can add, but that, that's ours. Other than that, I think that's about it.
Any questions for Chad? Okay, thank you, sir.
I will say the library is not as big a mess. I was in there today. So compared to last week, it's, it is looking better. They've got a lot of books and boxes, empty books on the shelves.
And I call it a mess, but do know, I'm, it's an exciting mess.
We hope into the week, this week, it even looks better, actually.
That's right.
Sounds like you just got some volunteer work.
It's a rainy week, though.
It's been awesome, so, yeah.
If you guys noticed in Chad's, uh, April budget, there's a, a negative $10,000 there. That's where they refunded the, uh, the signup fees for the youth sports programs. So just so everybody realizes what that is. And Christie, uh, got that refunded as soon as they, as soon as they closed and, and made the decision they weren't going to have summer ball, uh, we got the, the money refunded to everyone. And we had refunded anyone who had asked prior to that. So just so that everybody knows where we were on that. All right, Chief Mayers?
Uh, our calls actually went down quite a bit large, which was good for us because it limited the number of people that were going to get exposed to the COVID-19. So we're going to add, actually, probably in the single digits, seven, nine calls, possible, possible patients. It's kind of been all over places then, so all the other calls have been coming in good. So far, I don't know many of our guys have got sick of any kind, not hurt anybody. They are opening up grants again, but we're gearing it more to coronavirus, you know, material PPE, which so far everything we've got, we hadn't spent any money buying it. Everything we've got, we got from the park and emergency management, we got from the state. So everything was free and we, no more calls than we've had. I think we still have not enough of our stuff. So we've been real fortunate not to spend any money buying anything. We haven't been having fire meetings since all this started, but we're looking at May, be trying to do that again, start June 1st. Kind of give us a couple ways to tell they're going and kind of revisit it then, so... Other than that, I'm sure we all got it.
Was he able to get you any help with the PPE? Did you get?
I haven't talked.
Okay.
Yeah, not a lot.
Any questions for Chief Mayers? Thank you, sir. Christie?
So our budget looks really good considering, um, our sales tax has actually gone up. And we are, um, have a 10% increase on Zee's sales tax from over what we had lifted this time last year. And a 7% increase on the county sales tax. And of course, you know, last year we saw kind of that steady decline, so this is getting us back to where we were, plus just a little bit more. I hope to see that continue, but the next few months, I guess we'll show that. Um, we have three, sorry, four departments right now that are showing, um, they're over budgeted. The general fund's showing over budgeted. I still expect that to, um, break itself throughout the year. Uh, the parks is now $10,000 over budgeted. That's partially through what we've done, but I, I really think that will break itself over the year. Um, the police, and, uh, our core of the police guidelines that we're going to have to continue to watch, as their income probably declines, we'll kind of see what we do with that. But overall, I think we're in a good position, in a better position than what I really thought we would be when all of this started, so... The water department is also... The water department is also in a good position, we have increased our bank balances by about $35,000. This year in that department, we are trying to put as much as we can back in our holding or savings account in that department, because we will, at the end of this year, have to start paying Fayetteville, TruRc Sewer, so anything that we can put back now is just a bonus, so... The financials, I sent out, I sent out both months, as you can see for the March one, I did go through and underline all of the line items that were over 25%. It looks like a lot, and it is a lot, but most of those are ones that are paid early in the year, they'll correct themselves as we go. Are there any specific informations about, or questions about the financials?
Maybe on maintenance vehicles?
Which department?
General. On the fourth rate, looks like it's 145%.
I know, no specifically, Joe, I'd have to look at it. Do you know, Isaac, that's going to be Danny and Ed's trucks to do some... I don't know, Joe, I'll have to look at it, but I will, I'll look at it and see if I can figure out what's in towards that.
Anyone else?
So, I also have just a quick update on construction and finances. I am all but groveling with Bob's, with Bob on the channel, trying to get all the invoices turned in, telling them that we have money we want to spend, we just need the invoices to do that. I've got two more today, and he informed me today that we have one change order out there that we haven't received. But overall, best I can tell, unless I get surprised, we have five invoices remaining, three for the library and three for the court. Once everything is paid, we will have used $10,000 off of the building fund for the library, which is still going to leave them over $30,000 in there, and we should have about $8,600 left in our capital outlay, which is where we could put some extra money now that we were going to have to go into reserves for that, so... All that said, overall, we didn't end up having to go back and get more, more reserves even with all the changes, so I'm pleased with that overall. Hopefully, by this time next year, next month, I can say, not next year, that's probably what it's going to be, hopefully next month, I can say we've got all of that paid and we're done, but I'm working on those regularly, trying to get those. And I also wanted to expand a little bit on what John was talking about, on the donations that we received. We had some elderly ladies that got together with their senior school class and thought it would be a really great idea to send money to the city and let us get buy food for people that were in need. Not an ideal situation for the city, we don't want to be put in a position where we're choosing who that money goes to. So, kind of the first round of money we got, we, they went stands, bought some food, we took it to the school, let the school distribute it to the people that they knew needed it. We kept getting money just mailed into us randomly, wasn't people just from Westport, it was from all over, so... Finally, we're going to call my auditor, because I was like, I don't even know how to stump this or what I need to do with it. He's actually okay with us taking it, but we're not promoting that by any means. Anybody that calls and asks us, we tell them to please contact the food banks, because that's a better source for that money to go to. But the money that we have, he basically has asked me to do an income line on our income expense sheet that will show restricted donations, then we'll turn around and we'll have an expense line that says restricted donations. We'll be able to show that those two offset, we have to spend all of that money for food for this response, so... Right now, we have $318 left that we have to go, we need to go spend. But we can show that those things have actually offset, so he's aware that that's going to show up that way, and I think... We just have one lady from Westport we know, kind of, whose person is from class that did this, so we're hoping that we...
She goes to one of the real large churches in Jacksonville, and I think her heart's in the right place, but... And we did get money, they did offer substantial money, and, you know, we kind of shut away, but... I think they just, they knew, they, she was too old, she doesn't build a grocery store by herself. Hey, can I give, can we give, we're elderly, we want to help these families out, and they were choosing us as a vehicle to be able to give the food and get it to the schools to get in the rankings. And we called Taylor, and Taylor said, oh, absolutely, I have people calling every day. We can send out our routes, even gifts like this, what the kids want, what they would eat, so...
The other thing they can do is, our school has the Bright Futures organization, and they take money and spend it too. So, if they need a different group to donate it to, you could do it for Bright Futures.
I've had a couple of calls from people, I'm related to them, one and I've asked them to call the school, the food banks, you know, just because we're, it's not ideal for it to come through the city and for us to have to make that decision of who gives that money, so...
Can you not send it to the food bank?
It's real, we're not in the business of donations, that's the problem. We are prohibited from, literally prohibited by the constitution from giving away money, and so... And that's, there's a good reason behind that, it doesn't sound right right now, but there's a really good reason behind that.
You get it, you got to do something with it.
Well, that's what the auditor said was, he, he wanted us to go buy food. He necessarily wants to write a school check, so that's, so we had purchased food in an actual human way.
Yeah, he wanted to physically buy food to get to them.
We have this, we have this institutionalized annual issue, and that's called Shop With A Cop, and we all do it, and we all know it's okay, it's really not okay, but we do it, and the auditors have figured out a way to help us do that. And what we want to do is want to protect the chief and his department, and of course Christie, from someone ever coming in a year from now saying, hey, what'd you do with that money? And, and that's why it's great that you guys are coordinated, it's the police department going through you too.
Yes.
That's great, and then a trip to Sam's is not a bad, big deal, so we can do that and buy the food, and I think give it to the schools is a great idea, you know, or whatever.
The other thing, I was going to tell you, just kind of FYI, is our food service director just met with a few of us yesterday, and the government is only allowing us to continue doing the free breakfasts and lunches on the buses through the end of June. And after that, we're not allowed to anymore, the government's cutting that off. So, I don't know if you would want to hold that until, like, maybe July, if, no, okay. Anyway, I was just, I was just throwing that out there, because that's when the families will have a month between, but hopefully, school starting, but not getting any meals on the buses anymore.
Well, maybe what we'll try to do is get some non-perishables.
Or you could buy food and give it to this, yeah. But I was just throwing that information out there so you'd know.
And so, actually, Tom totally said, wait until it, I think, that he didn't even know, but when we had, when Tyler was here with the police dog, we had multiple donations to help us fund the dog. Dog and Tyler are now gone, we've had $422 still allocated to the dog. So, while I was talking to the auditor about that, I talked to him about the dog. Luckily, we had kept a spreadsheet and knew exactly who had donated. Called all of those people and got a verbal okay from them to transfer what was remaining of what they had donated from being allocated for the dog to being allocated to Shop With A Cop. So, we've actually written a check this week from the general fund and was added to Shop With A Cop, so that's clean done. We don't have any allocated money out there for something we don't have.
No more dogs.
No more. So, last thing I have is this year is an election year, and we have position ones are all at for election. That's Don, Joe, Jeff, and Jan, a paperwork, and my office, if anybody wants it, or if you want to spread the word, if you're not interested, that paperwork, I think it can be picked up anytime, it doesn't, you can't turn it in until I think it's end of July with a deadline of first week of August sometime, so...
Any questions for Christie?
No, but another suggestion, what about the food pantries that are around town? Can y'all put some of that food in those? That could be another idea. That was the only thing I was thinking of.
We're going to need to get a permit to go door to door to get our signatures because of the COVID.
Oh.
I'm not sure how you should do that. Anything else for Christie? Okay. So, we'll move into our item, see, next item is old business. We've got the recycle center on there. We do not have any information on that just because of current situation, so I was going to ask that the council table that until the next meeting.
Make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second, all of, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries, and that's tabled. So, that brings us to new business. Item one is the community garden. And we've had some developments in the community garden. Included an email that I had received from the Heritage Gardeners, and I included an email that I replied with to the Heritage Gardeners. So, it's come to my attention, Isaac let me know that Heritage Gardeners have moved out of the garden spot. I'm not sure where they moved to. But I wanted the council to be aware of my, where I stood on it. I made it pretty well known at the last council meeting we had that, that I wasn't happy with, with the way they kept the garden last year, because there was vegetables that were rotting on vines, it was grown up, it just, it wasn't well kept. That was my, that was my main concern. But my other concern on it was, and this email kind of brought that to light a little bit more, but to me, a community garden should be welcoming to anyone in our community that wants to go have a garden. And I felt like we were getting to a spot with our Heritage Gardeners where maybe that wasn't the case. And if you read my email response back to them, I think you could tell that that was, that was something that was really bothering me. So, that being said, I, I hope we can find someone in the community who, the kind of, my thought is, and I wasn't here when, when this was started, but my thought was, the Heritage Gardeners were were kind of an organizer for the community garden, someone to open that up, let people in, close it up, that type of thing. I hope we can find someone else who will organize that so that we can keep a garden open to the community. That would be, that would be what I would want to happen out of this. But I wanted the, the council to be aware of everything that was going on and offer any input that you might have on that.
Have we had any response from the community about the garden, and then the gardeners themselves?
No. Not, not to me, anyway, no.
When did they pick up their appointments and move out?
Can you remember when that was, Isaac?
I have my own email there.
It was about a week after this email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Been there a while.
Being difficult, man, I just found out to ask.
No, it was...
Rub and roll.
Well, I will go ahead and ask, I, I thought your response was pretty apt. Looking at their email, what they're asking for was more of a commitment from the city, that's not really going to happen, right? And I'm going to dedicate a line, well, I'm asking, you know, where we are budget wise, I just can't see...
I can't imagine.
Yeah.
Certainly can't imagine putting on a full-time personnel to assist with it, so... Are we good there?
Kind of a suggestion this year, that we just don't do anything out there like that, and see what happens next year when all this mess is over, and see if people are really interested in being in that garden.
That's a good idea.
I mean, most people that are interested in gardening have their own at their own house, so, for the most part. But I think we should table it, just set aside that this year, nothing's going to happen then. Because we don't know when it would be anyway, that we should let people in to be together down there. So, my suggestion would be that we just put that back on Bright Garden for next year.
Is the council good with that? Did everybody hear, Jan?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do it then. Item two under new business, so I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of everything that I signed without council approval in the past month, two months. As you can see, there were some change orders at the library. I signed off on two lot splits, a couple of other change orders at the library, change order on the sewer project. Obviously, I signed that declaration of emergency. I really appreciate John and Dawn helping me out when I brought somebody into our text group that didn't belong. Anyway, do you guys have any questions about those, those items that I signed under that declaration of emergency? No?
Looks pretty typical.
Well, before we move on, I'll ask what the work has been done at the library now for a month, five weeks? Is that approximately right? And I know it's the function of the project manager, or why this is languishing, but closeout really shouldn't take more than 60 days after the last, you know, two invoice periods. So, maybe you should stroke Sean through Patrick. If not, he will take you into July or August. But if Patrick becomes cognizant of it, of your request, he'll put an E on the project manager and cause him to scurry around for three or four days and get everything cinched up and closed down.
Anything else under those? Okay. I guess item three I already covered, that was the declaration of emergency that we signed. Oh, I guess there was two there, yeah. Item four was a sewer project update. Did you guys see the pictures and the, the update on, Christie actually gave you an extra handout on some of the, the project for the sewer and its progress. She was actually upset with me when I suggested the community center for our meeting, because she had a slideshow presentation for us on the, on the TVs, but... So, we have to settle for some black and white pictures, but they are moving along rapidly with that project, so... Any questions on it? No? All right. So, that brings us to item D, mayor's comments. We had a letter from Parkco Architects, did you guys read that in your packet?
Sure watched you guys.
He did, didn't he?
Man, that was... Like him, so Christie driving, like him, so I...
That was, that was nice to get from the architect. Another thing I wanted to touch on, kind of a big deal recently, are virtual meetings. So, I sent out an email the other night for the county planning meeting. Did anyone, did any of you guys, were you able to watch that?
Yes.
I got it an hour and a half, I have to meet you, so...
Okay. What did you think of it, Dawn? Are you looking forward to having a virtual meeting?
I've been doing virtual meetings now since this whole COVID thing started, so that was a joke.
So...
That was terrible.
It was, it was, it was hard. There, there were a lot of issues with it, and granted, it was their first, their first go at it, which brings me to my next point. For our April meeting, the county was trying to get approval at that time, was it going to be illegal to have a virtual meeting? We didn't have a whole lot going on, and so that's why I decided just to go ahead and cancel ours. For this meeting, there have been some suggestions that maybe we should have done it virtual. We haven't practiced virtual, I would like for all of us to, to give that a trial run. It's something we may need to do in the near future, possibly, you know, in the very near future, who knows? But I would like for us to prepare for it prior to actually having to do one. If, if you guys get a chance, I would like to use, and I hate to pick on county planning, but that is still on the website, County, Washington County Court, I think it's just their main website, isn't it?
I think so.
But I would encourage you to go look at it. But I would encourage you to go look at it. And I, I'm picking on them, but it was their first go at doing that and it was awful. And it wasn't nobody's fault, but the thing with the virtual meetings, and I want, I want to make sure everybody knows this, if you can do Zoom on your telephone, the problem with doing Zoom on your telephone or even on your laptop is you have an open microphone and an open speaker. And so when I say, can you hear me? You get, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? And it starts to echo. And then John would say, yes. And in the middle of my, can you hear me? Can you hear me? You have John going, yes, yes, yes. So I say all that to say, if, if we want to prepare to do a Zoom meeting, and I think we should, I would encourage you guys to do a little bit of research in it, possibly watch some other meetings that have been done where somebody has just their phone and they're, they're doing Zoom on their phone or, or on a laptop with an open mic. Best case scenario, you get a set of headphones and a microphone, and that takes a lot of that out. Shannon has volunteered to be our moderator. Should we have a virtual meeting? And you'll see in the county meeting, if you go back and watch that, there's a way to, to request, raise a hand so that you can be recognized and participate and it's nice and orderly. One of the other issues I have with the virtual meetings is it's difficult for the public to participate. Not that we have a lot of public participating, but the county meeting was a good example. There were members of the public who were wanting to speak to some of these planning issues and they were losing connection or they couldn't be heard or they were just having a lot of issues with members of the public trying to communicate. So that being said, I told Kristi and the department heads that I would like to do a trial run. I would like to call a special meeting, maybe June, July-ish, and have us do a council meeting on Zoom where we basically come in, we, we take role, we make sure everybody's comfortable. If anybody has questions, give our moderator an opportunity to, to mute us and unmute us. That way we're prepared if, God forbid, this fall, you know, we go back into a lockdown or something with this thing. So what are, what are the council's thoughts on that?
Oh, he, I don't remember exactly what it was that they were using, but it's not Zoom.
It was Zoom, but they had it going through.
They ran, yes, they ran it through something else.
YouTube.
Yeah, they ran it through YouTube. And I don't know if that had, because I use Zoom every day with detainees that need to see the judges, the lawyers. So they're seeing the prosecutors, they're seeing the defense attorneys, they're seeing the judges, they're seeing the law clerks. They're all in on the meeting and it's nothing like that. It's nothing like that. Even with me being in the jail with, you know how noisy it can be, it's still not like that. It wasn't as bad as that meeting. So I don't know if it was because it went through YouTube or what, but it, it was, it was awful. And I, and I, I promise you, if you do Zoom, it's not going to be that bad. And you can mute yourself and you can turn yourself back on. You know, just, you know, upon the screen, you just push a little button and you can mute yourself. So I, I think that we could do Zoom just fine. And I don't know if they can, if we, and you probably have the, know how to do it. I don't. But, you know, they were putting the graphs up on there and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I have no idea how to do anything like that. You know, if I need to show a judge something, I just go up to the screen and he goes, oh, okay, it looks like your signature. Is that your signature? Yes, sir. You know, but it works pretty well.
Mayor? Yes, sir. I've been doing them in several cities over the last two months. We're not surprised that Washington County couldn't get it together, but I've been doing them very professionally. Garver has a planner, Juliette, I bet you she'd do one for us free. They have the enterprise version of Zoom, which keeps people from showing their butts or other ugly things on by breaking in and just being ugly. Keeps them out. It also moderates very professionally. I was doing one in my car as y'all were walking in here. And, you know, if they're still on, I'll get back on when we're finished today. It takes a professional running it. What we do is we practice one time the day before. Everybody logs in. We run all that through with your device and your, your etiquette, you know, muting and such. And then once we get that done, we make sure the public knows and there are several ways that we get in. In one city, we even put a little computer on a stand in the middle of the, of the room. If someone wanted to walk in, they could use a computer if they didn't have one for a public hearing. So there are lots of ways we can do that. It can be very professional, Mayor. It can be very well done. I'll have, you know, Juliette call Kristi and, and see if maybe you want, we can get one free one out of her because I've gotten, let me see this one. I've gotten free ones for a couple clients. And, and then, and then we also went ahead, some clients have bought the enterprise edition. They buy a month or two subscription because you don't want to use the open source free Zoom for something as important. So we can get that done, Mayor. It'll be very professionally done and very well done. And we'll have good access from the public as well.
Okay. So let's put that on the, on the calendar to, you can coordinate with Tom and, and his contact and see what we can, we can get put together.
Do all council members have either a computer or an iPad?
Couple. Yeah.
Because I agree, Mayor, phone is a little harder with an iPad or a, or a computer. We can make that work very well for the county.
Okay. You may have just gotten off the hook too.
Well, we still have some.
No, she's still.
Tom, this may be irrelevant at this point, but right now it's legal for the cities to do that through the end of this year. Is that correct?
It is.
It's not something that, as far as we know, is going to be continued. That has only been made legal because of the COVID situation.
It's pretty good to have in your back pocket.
Right.
We have great, of course, like every time, everything is a gray area and then there's public hearings. That didn't make it into the law. And so we're really having to work with that. And so planning commission needs public hearing, or we do, we'll be, we'll be very careful about that. Otherwise, all of our meetings could definitely be on virtual meetings.
Okay. So that was the only other thing I had. I would entertain a motion to adjourn if no one has any questions. Is that a motion in a second?
Motion.
One and two. One and two. Okay. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.